Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for June 19th, 2017. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey Act notice, this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on June 14th, 2017 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. We're going to go into executive session, so let me read that. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a body, public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of San Jose and State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to be discussed are legal matter and personnel matters. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion?
Do we need attendance? Or we don't need attendance first?
Oh, do roll call? Let's do roll call first, and then we'll... I forgot.
Ms. Bogacheski, here. Ms. Centafonte, Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Haley.
Mr. Kins.
Here.
Ms. Trujillo.
Here.
Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Thank you for not interrupting me while I was reading all that, by the way, because I don't want to have to read that twice.
I move to go to the second.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be back about 7:30. All right, we're back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Ms. Centafonte? Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Haley? Mr. Kins?
Here.
Ms. Trujillo?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's arise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Board members, we had some correspondence. It was, you probably saw it online, it's listed in your agenda. And right now, I'm going to go directly to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President. I appreciate the time. I also appreciate everyone coming down. It's a longstanding tradition in our district to recognize our retirees. And I just want to share with you that if you add up all of the years of experience of all the retirees this year, it's over 530 years of experience. That's extraordinary. That is absolutely extraordinary. People who give their professional careers in the service of others, it's a very special thing to do. And tonight, we want to share our appreciation for all of the work that our retirees have done throughout the year. We've actually had to reschedule. Our initial schedule had, was, was a day that we had to close early due to excessive heat. We've rescheduled for tonight. And we have many members here tonight who are in the audience who'll be retiring. But there's also many members who couldn't be here, and we're going to wish them well as well. So, we're going to spend some time in talking about our retirees. First up, Ms. Smedley, who is our new Director of Guidance. So, please welcome Ms. Smedley to the board.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Ms. Ellen Stem to the podium with me. Come on up. So, I have the pleasure of speaking tonight about Ms. Stem, who's been working with us for quite a while here in Hillsborough at the Woodburn Elementary School and Hillsborough Elementary School as a school counselor. Ms. Stem came to us in September of 1996, where she joined the staff at Hillsborough High School for two years. Previously, she taught at McCorriston Catholic High School, Alexandria Board of Education, and Summers Point Board of Education. Previous administrators have given Ms. Stem accolades for her ability to teach group lessons, for being a committed and dedicated school counselor, for her warmth and empathy. And her greatest strength is the ability to engage with children in small groups and in the classroom. Ms. Stem will be leaving us to the warmer, nicer weather of, hopefully, most of the time, of Ocean City, New Jersey, where she hopes to renovate her childhood home. Congratulations. I'll give you a slide. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Stephen Carrigan, Principal of Woodburn Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor of talking about Mrs. Maria Betro. Maria, please come on up. This'll be painless, I promise. Before becoming a teacher, Maria worked in the Investment Banking Division of Bear Stearns in New York City. And then realized that it was teaching that was her calling. She's been in Hillsborough for 16 years, and I think one of the best things about this is, for three years preschool at Woods Road, for nine years self-contained kindergarten at HES, and for four years, a resource teacher at Woodburn, where she's had the ability to work with kids in all ages. So, in those 16 years, Maria Betro has been able to shape the lives of kids from kindergarten up through fourth grade. And that's just, that's outstanding. And having seen you in action and having seen the kids respond to you, it, they're better for having had you as a teacher. Maria's going to retire to Florida, so we can all be jealous of that. And she's going to be near her son and family. And an inspirational quote that Maria Betro likes to share is a quote that comes from Colleen Wilcox, and it goes, "Teaching is the greatest act of optimism." On behalf of all the students and staff, congratulations. And now, I'd like to introduce the Principal of Hillsborough Elementary School, Ms. Sue Eckstein.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the retirees and wish you the very best of adventures ahead of you. I'd like to recognize Carmella Palatone, who's not here today, but she's one of our beloved lunch aids, who's also retiring. Come on, Debbie, I see you sneaking up. Come on up here with me. And the guest of honor from Hillsborough Elementary School and also Woods Road, Senora Debbie Miller is retiring from our World Language Department, where she has taught Spanish and most recently split between our two schools for 31 years, right? Well, taught for 31 years. Seventeen have been in Hillsborough. I learned something new about Debbie this year. She also taught third grade, and she is an academic support teacher, so our children were in wonderful hands. She combined her love of travel and language with her love of teaching, and she became our Spanish teacher fantastica. How'd I do?
Wait in.
Right. I get to try again a little bit later, so keep... Senora Miller brings to the classroom to life. She brings us stories and songs expanding the minds of our students and helping them to think globally. They come out of there with ear-to-ear smiles. When asked about retirement, Senora Miller said she was looking forward to traveling on her own time. That's exactly how she said it. In other words, having the beautiful months of September, October, May and June, the ones most educators never see, to explore wherever she wants to go and add an affordable airfare. That's the key. It's the affordable airfare, yeah. Senora Miller is expecting her first grandchild in November. So, I'm sure... I know. Right? Doesn't she look fabulous? So, I'm sure she's going to return from her travels once in a while to soak up some of that good grandmother bonding time with the cute new little one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Buena suerte and tu nueva aventura.
Muchas gracias.
Enjoy that grandbaby.
Thank you so much.
I am honored to introduce Donna Landon, Supervisor of Special Ed, to the podium.
Good evening. I'm pleased and honored to be up here for Woods Road School to talk about our retirees that we have from Woods Road. I have two who are not here. One, Mary Beth Laughlin, worked in Hillsborough District for 30 years as a school social worker on the preschool team at Woods Road, and she retired in October. Also, we have from Woods Road Susan Anderson, who is retiring as a lunch aid at Woods Road School. She has been in the district since 2005. And now, I have Margie and Kathy. If you'll come on up here. Okay. Okay, who's first? Okay. All right, so, we'll do Margie first. So, Margie Schaefer has been CST Secretary in the district. She started here as a substitute secretary in 1990. She worked in every school in the district when she was a substitute. In 1992, she was officially hired as a part-time child study team secretary. And she also worked for a few years as a curriculum secretary before becoming a full-time CST secretary for us. Margie, I don't know what we're going to do without you, because you keep TyNet running. For everybody who knows what our TyNet IEP system is, if anything goes wrong, Margie has been our go-to guru of anything with TyNet, anything with the computers. I know you're going to enjoy your grandbabies, and we are going to really miss you.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay, Kathy. Okay. So, Kathy has been a speech therapist here in the Hillsborough District for 38 years. The past 33 years, she has been at Woods Road Elementary School, working primarily in the preschool autism program. Kathy has been a speech therapist in every single school in the district. She, when she started working here part-time, there are only three other full-time therapists here in district. And I know you shared at our party that we had, or gathering that we had, that you did mainly articulation therapy and that what was language services, why would you ever need anybody to work with language development for our students? I've been very blessed and pleased to work with you, and don't be a stranger, and congratulations. Okay. Have the honor of introducing Mr. Christopher Carey, Principal here at Autton Road Intermediate School.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to extend a congratulations to all the retirees, and I'll ask Carla and Kathleen to come on up. As they're making their way, I will mention that we have four teachers from Autton Road that were not able to make it to this evening, but I will certainly acknowledge them. First, we have Karen Hoffman, who is a, was a grade six literacy teacher for us. She had completed 32 years in education, all of those in Hillsborough. We had Diane Kosick, a special education teacher, 30 years in education, 15 in Hillsborough. And I wanted to give a special shout-out to Diane. She just became a grandmother. Debbie Crisco, she was a general, general music, vocal music and choir teacher over the last 33 and a half years, 22 and a half of which have been in Hillsborough. And while she was in Hillsborough, she worked at Hillsborough Elementary, Triangle, Triangle Elementary School, Hillsborough High School, and of course, Autton Road. And finally, I wanted to certainly acknowledge Ms. Jane Roxbury, who was a French teacher for us just for one year. She spent her time between the middle school and Autton Road. But prior to that, she completed 39 other years in the private sector at the Pingery School. So, again, I wanted to congratulate those four individuals, although they cannot be here this evening. So, first, we'll start with Ms. Carla Carrigan. For the last 33 years, 15 of which have been in Hillsborough at Autton Road and HES, Carla has worked with her students with a passion and conviction that all children can learn and find success. Over the years, Carla served as advisor for our Sign Language Club and our Crochet Club. She always set aside time to chaperone evening concerts, and she worked hard to add to the positive culture at Autton Road by organizing an annual cookie exchange, staff gathering during the holiday season, as well as an annual campaign to support breast cancer awareness. I know that Carla certainly plans to stay busy in her retirement by doing some traveling, working toward earning her Wilson certification, and providing her expertise in the area of assistive technology for those with hearing impairments. I know Carla will miss Autton Road, but she is considering coming back someday to work as a substitute teacher. A particular quote that I know that stands out to Carla is, "Surround yourself with positive people. This will make a huge difference in your life." Carla, not only is that a good wisdom to live by, I know that the staff at Autton Road thank you for always being so positive to us. Carla, we have been a better school for having you with us. Aris will miss you, and we thank you for all that you have given us. We wish you well. Next, I'll invite Ms. Kathleen Morrison to step up. Kathleen will be finishing up her 37th year in education, 11 which have been in Hillsborough, three of those were HMS and Autton Road for the remainder. As a special education teacher, for anyone who has worked with Kathleen, you will immediately know that she is such a knowledgeable and wise person. In fact, Kathleen shares that her words to live by are, "Knowledge is the antidote to fear," by Ralph Waldo Emerson. And Kathleen, we thank you for providing your students with the very best by helping each and every one of them to understand that challenges and barriers can be overcome. As Kathleen looks ahead to her retirement, she's planning to relax a bit more, get into an exercise regimen, read, do some traveling, spend some time with her grandson, and perhaps return to public education as an instructional assistant, so she doesn't have to write lesson plans, she indicates. And I apologize, it was your granddaughter, not your grandson. Thank you. Kathleen, I know you have always had your students' best interests and heart, and you thoroughly enjoyed serving in the role as teacher. Thank you for everything. We know that you will, you will miss Aris, and likewise, we will miss you. I wish you all the very best as you move into a new phase of your life. And now, I'd like to invite up the Principal of Hillsborough Middle School, Dr. Joe Tribolsky.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Hillsborough Middle School, we have four retirees this year. Two of them couldn't be here this evening, so let me start with those two individuals and give a warm recognition to Sue Rhodes, who retired in January this year after 16 years at Hillsborough Middle School, teaching literacy and special education. She and her husband are now off enjoying their retirement in Florida, and we wish her very, very best. And Kathy Malloy, couldn't be here this evening. Kathy just retired in March after 25 years in education. The past 18 were here in Hillsborough, teaching Spanish. She was a regular member of my faculty advisory committee and mentor to many teachers over the years, and we miss her dearly and wish her well. Muchos gracias, Senora Malloy. How's that, Ms. Eckstein? For my four years of French. The next two individuals who are here this evening, let me begin with Mr. Pete Passy. Pete, would you join me here, please? Pete's retiring from the middle school, actually retired a little earlier this school year after some knee replacement surgery, and 15 years at Hillsborough Middle School, starting with his first as an instructional assistant, and then as a teacher of science and technology education for the last 10 of those 15 years. In addition to all of his work, though, in the classroom, Pete was always pitching in around the school in many special events and extracurricular activities, including, and one of the most significant, I think, was serving as the organizer of our annual HMS charity volleyball events. This was a faculty-student event each year that brought us all together and raised thousands of dollars over the years to benefit a number of medical research organizations, as well as the U.S. Veterans Organizations. Pete is also a long-term, longtime, excuse me, resident of Hillsborough community, and he was a founding member of the Junior Raiders Organization that has been an integral part of youth sports in our community for, well, for decades now. Pete's wife, Kathy, is still teaching at Woodburn Elementary, and I know she's got a long honey-do list for you while she's still working. But soon, I know, will join your retirement in their new home down in North Carolina very soon. So, Pete, thank you very, very much for all of your wonderful years in Hillsborough. Next, please join me, Donna Becker. Donna's retiring from HMS after 16 years as a special education teacher in our, in our school. Donna's dedicated, patient, loving guidance has been a vital support for so many children in our special needs environments that have successfully gone through Hillsborough Middle School because of her loving care. In addition to all that work, though, in the classroom, Donna has chaperoned more than her fair share of extracurricular activities, including ski club for many years, which could explain why you had to have a knee replacement, too. Everybody's having knees replaced. She's also served on our HMS Sunshine Welcoming Committee for many years, helping new teachers orient to our school each September. Donna and her husband are off to Switzerland this fall. I know, it's a shame. Congratulations, Donna. Thank you for all the wonderful years in Hillsborough Middle School. It's my pleasure to introduce the Principal of Hillsborough High School, Mrs. Karen Binger.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce several of my retirees who could not be here this evening. First, there's Mrs. Kate Costa, who is retiring from her position as a business education teacher at the high school. She spent 15 years in our district after, and 44 years in education. Mrs. Chris Demetrio is retiring, or already has it, rather, as an instructional assistant and job coach at HHS. She was with us for a little over 13 of her 20 years in education. Mrs. Geraldine, otherwise known as Gigi Ryan, retired mid-year from her role as a computer resource teacher. She was with Hillsborough for 34 of her 37 years in education. And Mrs. Debbie Smolinka, who is our Secretary to the Athletic Director, is retiring this year after 13 years in education and 13 years at Hillsborough High School. And we wish all of those folks the absolute best. But here with us tonight are two other retirees. I would first like to invite to the microphone to join me, Robin Decker-Kenny. Mrs. Kenny has been a counselor at the high school for 18 of her 40 years in education. After retiring, she plans to, well, actually, she already retired the very beginning of this year, so she's already enjoying and appreciating the mundane, catching up on reading all of the books piled everywhere in her home, building skills sidelined in deference to professional responsibilities, and enjoying nature while she lives healthy. When I asked for her to share some words of wisdom or some thoughts with us, she said, "So many books, so little time. So many pets, so little time. So many walks, so little time. And now, there's finally time." Mrs. Kenny is one of the most devoted counselors I have had the honor of knowing. Calling her thorough can never do justice to how fastidious she was in keeping track of and supporting her students. She followed up with everyone about everything, leaving no reminder or encouragement unsaid. She hated technology, and her office contained stacks of paper. But she knew what she needed and where it could be found in the event that she actually had to put her hands on it. She loves her students and is sincerely interested in them and what is important to them. Her four-legged canine best friend, Jolly Roger, was also a perennial office favorite during the summers, and Roger will be missed just as much as Mrs. Kenny, frankly. He's really cute, and he's so sweet. Yeah, she says, "My boy." Thank you, Mrs. Kenny, for guiding so many HHS students to success and for being a wonderful part of the HHS family. And Mrs. Christine Kirsch is retiring this year from Hillsborough High School. Mrs. Kirsch is a family and consumer science teacher, or FACS as we refer to it. She spent 16 of her 37 years in education at HHS. After retiring, she plans to spend time with her family, travel. As a matter of fact, she toured Portugal as her retirement gift to herself. She is going to South Africa and Swaziland in August, traveling to five countries along the Mosel and Rhine Rivers in April of 2018, and then there are the trips within the U.S. She looks forward to quilting, reading, and doing, frankly, whatever she wants. She advises people, "Never stop learning. Never stop reaching for those goals you've yet to accomplish. Shoot for the moon, and if you land among the stars, you tried and had a wonderful journey to a wonderful place." Mrs. Kirsch is full of surprises. In the classroom, she was very laser-focused on what she wanted her students to accomplish and giving them the tools they needed that translate to being an adult. Outside of the classroom, however, she can be seen ziplining through the jungles, climbing Machu Picchu, and skydiving. Mild-mannered FACS teacher from September to June, and then adventurer when the last bell rings. Congratulations to Mrs. Kirsch on her retirement, which sounds exciting and maybe even a smidge more exhausting than teaching, and that is saying something. Congratulations to all of the retirees this year. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Ms. Binger. We do have a few other people who were not able to make it this evening that I would like to recognize. Larry Schultz, who has been a technician throughout the district, is retiring. Also from Sunnymead, Suzanne Levinson, first grade. As well as from Triangle School, Susan Fajin, fourth grade. Karen Siegel, occupational therapist. And Laura Sozio, ASI teacher. Please join with me in thanking them as well for their service. At this time, I'd like to invite all of our retirees to please join us in a brief reception in your honor, and the board stands in recess for the next five minutes. Thank you. Are all Board members seated? Let's see, we got everybody, one, two, three, four, five, and Gina's six. Okay, Kaz, we're going to come back. Okay, we're good. All right, we had a brief recess, and we're back in session, and we're going to continue with Dr. Schiff with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Gillette. I'm pleased to share some additional news from around the district with our Board of Education and the community members this evening. Tomorrow, Hillsborough High School class of 2017 will be surrounded by family, friends, teachers, and administrators as they graduate on to the next stage of their lives. During the past few weeks, this amazing class has celebrated their successes at dinners and activities in their honor. The annual Senior Athletic Dinner was held on June 6th at the Imperial Restaurant for 370 seniors, athletes, parents, coaches, and guests. 145 of those in attendance were senior athletes from 29 sports offered at Hillsborough High School. There were also 30 scholarships given out by various booster clubs and memorial fund. Chitra Parikh, a member of the girls' golf team, and Matthew Sanders from the boys' swim team were the 2016-2017 Scholar Athletes. Megan Bull from the girls' swim team and Matthew Sanders from the boys' swim team remain Senior Athletes of the Year by their head coaches. Congratulations to Chitra, Matthew, and Megan, and all of our senior athletes. We wish you the very best as you leave Hillsborough High School and continue on to your next steps. The Class of 2017 celebrations continued on June 8th at the Senior Awards Night. That evening, over $86,000 in awards and scholarships were handed out by local community members and groups, teachers, staff members, local families, booster clubs, and so many other caring and generous organizations. This was an amazing evening for those in attendance to celebrate our seniors, as well as to see the community support for their graduating class. One of the amazing accomplishments that was handed out that evening was to senior Catherine Hawkes, who was presented with an appointment to the U.S. Naval Academy by Mr. Gary Driscoll, a U.S. Navy Academy Blue and Gold Officer. This is a $200,000 scholarship, a free ride for four years. Congratulations to Catherine and all of our seniors who were honored that evening. Thank you to Ms. Smedley, our Director of Guidance, and the entire Guidance Department, including Mrs. Uniskevich for planning such a wonderful evening to honor our seniors who have worked so hard for the last 13 years. Thank you also to all of our community members and organizations for supporting our students with the awards that were presented that evening. In addition to the $86,000 that was handed out on Thursday evening, the graduating class of 2017's scholarship and awards monies is close to $2.3 million. Let's hear it for our graduating seniors. Congratulations also goes out to Coach Ruzemblum and the Hillsborough Middle School Raider Softball Team for winning their fifth consecutive Central Jersey Junior Softball Athletic Association Championship on May 24th. The team defeated Branchburg Middle School by a score of 9 to 5. Congratulations to the coach and the girls' softball team on an amazing season. I am also pleased to share that after qualifying at the National History Day State Competition in May, Autton Road Intermediate in May, Otten Road Intermediate Schools' Nikitha Ramanathan attended the National History Day Final Competition at the University of Maryland this past week. Nathika's exhibit, the Japanese Schindler, qualified as one of the top 10 junior individual exhibits from around the United States. She also won a medal for Outstanding Entry from New Jersey. Congratulations, Nathika. We are so proud of your hard work. Thank you also to Nancy Patrick and Pat Sellers, the National History Day Advisors here at And the last thing that I'd like to share is that one of our students here, and maybe, Kaz, you can zoom in on this, was featured on the cover of Young Audiences Magazine, which is published to schools around the country for, I guess, his work participating and playing the stand-up base. This young man is one of our sixth graders here at Otten Road School, and his name is Grant Bogaszewski. Let's please give Grant a big round of applause. This is wonderful. Thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. We had, under approval of minutes, I'm gonna get this right this week, we had one meeting for minutes for approval, these are the minutes for May 22, 2017. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, minutes passed. We're going to forego committee reports today because we do not have all of the minutes. We do have a meeting next week, in one week, so we'll do all the committee reports next week. Okay, so we're gonna go right, oh, we're gonna go to the public for new business or items on the action agenda. If you come up to the podium and you state your name and either your address, your affiliation, and you can ask a question or make a statement.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Lee, and I'm here representing the Hillsborough High School Robotics Team. I'm the new PR manager with our election in May, and our new leaders are Diana Vronin and Smriti Rajparo. I'm here to give a brief synopsis of what we've done the last month and our summer plans. On May 20, we attended, we held our annual WISE event at J&amp;J Skilman. This is the Women in Science and Engineering, and there are over 100 girls got to attend it. With our marshmallow catapults and make-your-own perfume booths, we helped spread the importance and practicality of science to young women. This Saturday, we attended an off-season competition, a robotics competition hosted by Team 1923, the Midnight Inventors. There, we were in the first alliance team. Although we didn't come in first place, it was a useful opportunity for us to help with the transition of the seniors leaving. We had new students working on the robot, and we had new drivers as well. We're already preparing for next year. This summer, we will be planning, we will be continuing our summer enrichment programs where we teach elementary school, where we teach elementary school kids how to use NXT kits. For two weeks, Team 75 will be at Woodford Elementary School, and we will be helping to spread STEM awareness. Furthermore, our team is expanding on our chairman's programs, reviving our old robots and revamping our volunteer programs by brainstorming outreach events, programs, and improvements to our team. We plan on having a larger impact on our community this year, as a team and on spreading STEM. In addition to our traditional demos at the 4H Fair and the Rotary Fair, we plan on expanding our outreach initiatives. On behalf of the new leadership and on behalf of Team 75, the Hillsborough High School Robotics, the Robo Raiders, we look forward to working with the board at this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public? Oh, there she is.
Hi, Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road and also the treasurer for the HGA. I'm actually speaking tonight on behalf of Kitty Ward, who is the secretary of our HGA, who could not be here tonight, so this is from her. Since tonight we are having a first reading of a district wellness policy geared to nutrition, I would like to raise the following concerns. Part of wellness is keeping hydrated, and in fact, part of the policy recommends that, quote, "Each school will make potable water available to children at no charge in the place where breakfast, lunch, and after-school snacks are served during meal service. In Sunnymead, there is one fountain near the cafeteria. It is extremely old, and the younger students have difficulty turning the handle and drinking from the bubbler, and the amount of water they can consume is limited. Cups are not available, and the only other water that is available is for sale. This issue has been exasperated this year with the closing of many classroom water sources because of high lead content. Again, there is only one fountain available in the primary wing, and many of the students have difficulty working it. We have encouraged parents to send in water bottles, but for various reasons, that does not consistently happen. During the hot days, we had several students who did not have water bottles, and although we encouraged them to visit the one fountain often, they wouldn't drink it because it was warm. What are the plans to remediate the water fountains in our schools? If the issue is not resolved during the summer, can we please have clarification if the district will be providing potable water in the classroom, and if so, what mechanism will be in place to order more? If not, what plans do you have to communicate to families that there is no running water in a classroom, keeping in mind that not every one of our families receive electronic communications, and many need communications in Spanish and other languages? A second wellness issue that arises is the inability to properly wash hands prior to eating lunch or snack. It is extremely difficult to be in a primary classroom without running water, and hand sanitizer is not as effective as soap, water, and rubbing hands for 20 seconds before wiping off with a paper towel. Hand sanitizer does not get rid of glue-stick, dirty, or sticky hands. Are there plans for having running water in the classrooms for next year? Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Amy, Dr. Schiff. We talked about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Amy, for your concern on this. The answer is yes. We are going to be remediating all of the, all of the water outlets that, that we had concerns with and problems with. We anticipate receiving the final report in the middle of July with remediation occurring before the students are back in school in September.
Any other public for new business or action agenda? Okay, so I think at that point, we go to, right to the action agenda. Okay, so let's go right to the action agenda.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions in the area of education to approve travel-related expenses, the determination list, ELL Summer Enrichment Program, to approve the novels for summer reading as approved out of education, approve overnight trips, and approve the acceptance of the playground equipment as outlined in the Parents as Champions for Healthy School Grant, and approve the wellness policy for first reading, and approve for second reading, service animals, class rank, and use of electronic communications and recorded devices. Approve the district calendar for 1819, and that's all under the area of education.
Okay, so, this is kind of a, I myself want to separate one item to vote differently, so I'm just gonna ask it straight out for a motion for 9.1 through 9.8. I'm saving the last one for separate because I'm, myself, I'm gonna vote differently, I think, maybe. So, so could I have a motion for 9.1 through 9.8?
No move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, let's have some...
Let's modify real that if we can separate it out.
Oh, okay, let's see it, let's hear it again.
Policy number 5430 out of 9.8.
Okay, so, let's have, so, the motion will be for 9.1 through 9.8 with the exception of 5430. Okay, so, discussion for the ones that we didn't separate.
So...
Or Brett?
Brett?
Yeah, go ahead, Brett.
For 9.8, we're not approving those, we're just approving them for a second reading?
No, once, 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 once you vote on the second reading, that's approved.
Okay.
This is the final chance at the final crack. Discussion, Tom.
Yeah, this is for first reading, it's actually on the wellness policy as well. In there, it talks about that there's both district and school wellness committees, and in item four, this is for the school, it says they must meet at least four times per year to establish goals for overseas school health and safety policies and programs, including development, implementation, periodic review. And then, right after that, in the next one, they talk about having annual reports, four times a year to make sure that you've got your goal set, and developing goals just seems a little excessive, so I just wanted to see if there's, if there's flexibility that we have, or is that a mandate? So, that's, that's, you know, to incorporate for the second reading.
Typically, when they put those things in there, it's pretty much a mandate. I know the annual one is definitely a mandate, and there is a minimum requirement. I would have to check to make sure that it's actually four. If it's in there as four, it probably is, but that part I'd have to check on. We do do it anyway, no matter what, but they don't, they don't continue to discuss the same goals. They talk about progress towards the goals, but they don't rehash the same stuff.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so any other discussion on 9.1 through 9.8 exclusive of the class rank policy? Okay, so let's have a roll call just on those then.
Ms. Bogaszewski?
She's departed.
Ms. Centiponte?
She's departed.
Mr. Cohen?
Departed.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so let's have, let's have a motion for 9.8 policy, 5430 class rank. Just for that one. Someone moving?
No move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, Judy and Tom. All right, discussion, Tom, you wanna lead off?
Yes, again, reiteration, I'd like to have, I'd like, the way that it reads right now is that the district will not provide class rank, and I think that sends a connotation that the district, the board knows better than what's, than what a student or a parent may have in terms of understanding what their class rank is, so I'd like to have an opt, in, opt-out, that could be determined, but I'd like to, I'd like to have flexibility for the district to be able to provide class rank for those students or parents who are interested. That's all.
So, Tom, we had some discussion about this at the education committee meeting. I did leave that meeting early, but I was there for this part. And there was some discussion about whether, whether a class rank, if we're collecting it or calculating it, whether it is a school record and whether ultimately, if requested in the, you know, right way or legal way, that we would have to provide it to a parent. You know, maybe a FOIA request or something, I mean, you know, I know that's not what you're, what you're looking for exactly, but, but I, I think, I think that it is a record that we do collect, we do calculate it, and I think ultimately, it would probably have to be provided, notwithstanding the policy. Was that, was that your understanding, Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the understanding.
But also for the, for the district to be able to provide class rank to those admissions that the student would authorize. I think that should be an option as well.
Well...
Judy.
What's that? Right now, we're just approving, we're just putting... Yeah, I think, I think when this policy as it was, was placed on the agenda a while back, the purpose was just to remove what we no longer do, and if you want to get into like a further discussion about class rank, I think we would take time to do that. But Jessica Smedley did come to our committee meeting, and she once again reiterated the fact that there is such a squish of kids in the same category, like maybe 200 kids who would have within a couple of tenths of percents of each other, that for whatever benefit would be gleaned by the top students, one and two, which are obviously calculated because we'll see them at graduation, won't we? But for the rest of the kids, you could have like a 95 average and be either number 200 or number 400. And I think that we have some work to do on that issue before class rank might be more meaningful, truthfully. So, I would just ask that we pass the thing that's in front of us, just so that we get rid of what used to be prior to 2007 and have an updated policy, and then, you know, if there's some will on the board to look at it again in a more comprehensive way, maybe, you know, have Ms. Smedley come to the board, explain what you explained to the education committee. We could do that if that's the will of the board.
So, let me, let me restate that a little bit. So, the policy that we, that's on the agenda for tonight is, was not a reexamination of our class rank policy.
Correct.
It was to memorialize practice that we've had for about 10 years now, with some minor changes to the language in the policy to memorialize that practice. And as Mrs. Haas indicated, we, we certainly could open it up to have an examination of the class rank policy.
I think, I think a policy that's 10 years old is warranted to reexamine, so...
Mr. Cooper.
Can I ask a question? Why we collect it, but we don't use it?
Well...
What's the point of collecting it and calculating it and doing all this if we're not using it any way nor providing it to anyone or...
Yeah, actually, we do provide it. There are certain scholarships and certain, military academies require it.
But should we tell them that there's 200 people, that they could be one or they could be 200?
I don't know what we tell them, but...
So, I mean, why is, why do we allow some people to have it and not everybody? I guess, similar to Tom's concern, either we don't do it, if we're wasting the time to do it, and it could possibly, as you indicate, might be part of a school record that is able to be gotten if we go through the proper channels.
Brett, let me just say for the public, there is no wasting time now because everything's computerized, so it's, it's literally a click of a button.
I'm not talking about wasting time in that way, but I'm talking about, we're opening us up to possibly, you know, so you're saying basically, I have to file a legal brief to get my, my class ranking of my kids?
Well, I don't think it would come to that.
No, I think you just ask the question. You could just ask the question and get it, but...
But under the current policy, you can't. Can I, can I just go into the guidance and go, can I have my son's class rank?
I don't think that, yeah, Dr. Schiff.
Dr. Antunes, can you clarify?
If you send Mrs. Smedley an email, I'm sure she would provide it to you.
But is that the board's, is it the policy?
The policy doesn't indicate that. This is talking about going to outside agencies, colleges, that sort of thing.
Right.
If you specifically ask for it, she will provide it to you.
And then, can I provide that to colleges?
You can, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, you can, but it won't...
It's not gonna come from the school, so it won't be part of the official transcript.
But it's part of the official record.
There it is.
But not part of the official record that's provided to colleges?
It could be calculated at somebody's request, but it's not going out, you know, back in the day, it used to be on every transcript.
There are many schools around the country that don't provide class rank at all, so colleges have to look at apples to apples. And one school's class rank is very different than someone else's class rank, which is the reason why they don't do it. Across the country, not just Hillsborough.
Right, but if I'm a school looking at maybe possibly three kids from the same school, class rank can have an effect.
Mrs. Smedley would say probably not, unless it's an Ivy League somewhere, probably not, is what Mrs. Smedley would say. But that's a much better discussion to have, have with her because she can speak much more eloquently about it.
Can I just say, but they have their weighted and unweighted grade point averages, and that's, that's what class rank is derived from in the first place. So, the colleges would have that for each student. So, I think they could, you know, if there was three students at the same school, I think is a new example, they would know which student was higher than the other, based on that. But like I said, look, I'm not opposed to opening it again, I'm gonna, you know, vote to pass, this changes that we need to, to make the policy right since we've been through tonight. Let's have a roll call on it, I guess.
May I just add real quick? I think it's important for the board to know that without class rank, students in the class of 2017 will be attending Harvard, Princeton, Cornell, so, and we don't have class rank. So, some of the finest, most competitive universities in the world are accepting Hillsborough High School kids without class rank.
Let's do a roll call. We can just call the people there.
Sure, Mr. Cooper?
No.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
No.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Does not pass.
Motion does not pass.
No.
Just for clarification, policies require full majority.
Oh, requires how many, four, five?
Five.
Oh, required all five of us?
I believe it requires...
We'll need clarification on it. We'll, we'll report back out on Monday night.
Okay, I think, yeah, my understanding is policies require full majority, so it would be five votes.
Judy?
Yeah.
Majority of the full board for policy? Okay.
It's a policy.
All right.
It's a policy.
All right. We'll, we'll do some further work on it. All right. All right. We'll do some further work on it. All right, so let's talk about 9.9. Let's have a motion first for 9.9.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. This is the calendar, and I had to leave, I had to leave education committee before we did, we talked about the calendar, so I don't know exactly how it ended up. Well, I do know, because I read the minutes. I'm still concerned, Mrs. Haas, that we're going to go have a calendar with two built-in snow days. It seems that that's not enough snow days to me, for me.
How many did we use this year?
Well, we had three in the calendar. We used all three. It was good that we had three in the calendar. Anybody else have a? How many votes does it take to pass the calendar, by the way, Dr. Schiff? Will it take five, do you think?
I believe it's a majority of the sitting.
The sitting board, okay. I'd like to see us have the in-service days on the Wednesday and Thursday before the Labor Day weekend, regardless of when that falls. That would merely put two more days into the calendar. We did that. We'd have, here's one is a snow day, so another day built in and take another day off some other day. I know that, I read the minutes, and I know there's some issues with when we can end graduation. I think Ms. Binger indicated in the, what I read in the minutes, that that's pretty well locked in, and I can accept that. But maybe we can have another day off somewhere. That's what I would do.
Where are your in-service days?
Wednesday and Thursday before Labor Day weekend.
So you're talking about August 29th and 30th?
Yeah, sure.
Well, that would be precedent setting.
Before school starts?
They always have the in-service days before school starts.
Uh, no.
No.
We have new staff in service before school starts. We've never, at least in my years here, ever had all staff prior to September. Never in August have we had all staff since I've been here.
How do we get the five days?
Wait, no, no, but hold on a second.
We're not talking about August, we're talking about before school starts.
Point of clarification, though, Greg did not say all start before, he said before the first day of school.
And Judy clarified, August?
August 29th and 30th.
She clarified for the dates, but that's not what, that's not what Mr. Gillette said. He said, we always, we always have two in-service days before school starts.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct, before the first day of school, before the first day of classes.
But what is being proposed?
Right.
What does it matter if it's August 29th to 30th or if it's September 1st and 2nd?
I think there are more snow days. I'm confused.
Because then what happens is on, and you're in session on the fourth and fifth.
You'd be able to start school two days earlier and still end school on the same date, so that's two more days of school. You could literally have four snow days if you wanted to.
Because the fourth and fifth is listed in the calendar right now, those would be in session days. And that gives you two additional snow days.
Is there a major objection?
I'm against that. I'm against starting in August.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, and I, I mean, that's a major family vacation week before Labor Day.
Sure.
I think we've not done this in the past for a reason.
We've had in-service days before Labor Day many times since I've been on the board. We've had full staff in-service days before Labor Day many times. Many times Labor Day falls on September 7th or September 6th, and we've had in-staff, in-service days on September 1st and 2nd, or September 2nd and 3rd.
But in this particular case, Labor Day is September 3rd, right, for 2018?
Okay.
So that's early.
September 3rd is Labor Day, and we have the 4th and 5th.
Theoretically, I'm not opposed to it starting before Labor Day, but in this particular case, being that the end of August.
Because Labor Day is early, it's too early.
Because it's early, I'm against that.
It's not, it doesn't feel like school year yet, it's August. I get it.
I would be in support of it.
The other, let's start with Brett first.
I was just going to say, last year, we had this whole thing with only two snow days, and we kept taking days away, and it turned out to be fine. I mean, did you see a big problem with that?
No, well, we had, we had three built-in snow days, so we had 183-day calendar. We started with last year.
Right.
We had to close three days.
And we just took them off Martin Luther King, or we took them off Presidents, we took them as we went along.
And also, prior to that, we've had a year where we actually had to take days from spring break because of.
Right.
That was a hurricane-sand year.
Well, how many times did that happen? That happened once in an extraordinarily snowy winter.
And we didn't really use them last year. I mean, wasn't one of the snow days not even for snow? I think, should I remember it correctly?
They were legitimate snow days.
For what?
That was not last year? That was the year before.
I forget.
They were all, I think they were all legitimate.
They were all snow.
No, they were ice. One of them was ice, which, because it wasn't really snow, it was leftover ice.
And while there are, while there are some people take that week before, there are also, for other families, there are camps that shut down before, you know, towards the end of August. So it's an opportunity for them to be in school.
All right, I understand. We wouldn't be talking about having kids come back before Labor Day. We did that too, one year, and I'll tell you what, I'm against kids coming back to classes before Labor Day. I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that. I think Tom and I disagree on that one. But I, and we did do that a couple of years ago.
I don't remember that as a parent.
We did that about two or three years ago.
It was, Labor Day was late.
Labor Day was late, and we had in-service and classes.
So you had in-service on the first and second, class was on that Friday.
Yeah. Can I bring up another issue?
Sure.
The more you push into August, the more issues you're going to have with all the other issues of air conditioning and possibilities of pushing forward and coming into hot classrooms, not only for students, but now for the staff who's going to have to be here two days earlier.
Let me just say, we're talking about the 1819 calendar, not 1718, which we already passed quite a few months ago.
Okay.
1718 is, so next year's calendar beginning, is all set. This is 1819. We are moving forward with air conditioning. This one, this building, the middle school possibly, more likely than not by 1819, and the elementary schools, hopefully in time, they're next in line. Okay, I just had it out there. If we've all set our piece, that's fine.
And then another consideration, this is on the flip side, if we don't use snow days, right now, we take, we give back days around Memorial Day weekend. I would like us to consider, especially for this calendar, it being June 17th and 18th. That way, you remove some of those hot days. It's the end of the, you know, last week of school. I think you're going to get much more educational value in May than in June.
Yeah, that, Tom, actually, I'm going to disagree with you on that. I think we're going to get some pushback from Ms. Binger about having a couple of days off right before graduation. It might be problematic.
No, you're still in session on the 19th and the 20th.
I think she would have some pushback on that. I think Dr. Schiff would agree. But I mean, that's something to consider, too. All right, so we had enough discussion. Let's vote, let's have a roll.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Abstained.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, good. Let's go to HR, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, to approve revised retirements, retirements and resignations as listed, reappointments, leaves of absences, contract changes, and appointments to current year of a school nurse and substitutes, and approve the appointments for next year of teachers, school therapists, school nurse, school counselor, secretary, and technician, approved student teachers, extra period coverage, proctors for advanced placement, summer enrichment programs, renewal of tenured certificated staff, renewal of tenured HPSA staff, renewal of transportation drivers and aides, approved 2017 summer work, extended school year program, credit recovery, policies and regulations for first reading, including disciplined physical examination of teachers and support staff, approved salary changes as listed.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Judy and Tom. All right, discussion for HR. Anybody?
Yeah, real quick, clarification for 10.15, this is the 2017 summer work. I'm assuming that that's not to exceed, that's going to be based on hours and days actually performed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, operations.
Thank you, President Gillette. I ask.
We have 11.3 also.
We have 11.3 also. Yes, that's on it. Yep. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve line and transfers, accept the donation of athletic equipment for ARIS from ARIS's HSA, and to accept the resignation of Mr. Stephen Cohen's resignation as a board member effective tonight.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just real quick, with regard to 11.3, if we can just inform the public as to what, and board members, as to what the next steps are to fill the vacant board member position, please.
Certainly. This is prescribed by law. When a vacancy occurs at this time of the year prior to an election, there will be a posting, an advertisement of any community member that wishes to be considered for the appointment. This would be appointed by the Board of Education. We will have at our July meeting invite candidates who are interested to interview with the board, to come in public session, to come to the podium and share something about their background and receive questions from the Board of Education. At that time, the board will retire to executive session, deliberate in private, make a decision about who would be the next appointed board member, come out in public session, and make the appointment that evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And I think, I think we'll probably invite Mr. Cohen back to our second meeting in December to be recognized. I know it's a long way off, but that's when we usually, under the new, under the new configuration of when elections are, we usually have a final meeting, would be the second meeting in December for board members. That's when we recognize board members. So maybe I'll reserve my remarks until he's present.
Just clarification, if someone wants to be considered, do they have to file anything or they just have to show up?
They have to apply to the Board of Education. There's a few criteria, including living in the community for a year. They have to be a registered voter. They have to be able to read, and they have to residency, and they have to be 18 years or older.
And they apply, there'll be a posting to apply directly to the Board of?
To the Board Secretary. The Board Secretary will then distribute the information to all of the board members prior to the board meeting in July.
Also, since Mr. Cohen's term ends in December, it's just for the time till December, there's no, we don't need to worry about special elections for a remainder of term past that.
Just a question, would there be a precedence for not filling that position until, since his term is only, I guess, six months left from July?
There's some requirements that must be filled, and if we neglect to fill it, the county superintendent will fill it for us.
Oh, I see.
I don't remember what, how many days.
I think it's 60.
60, I think, yeah, 60.
I'm looking at the policy right here, and it said that the Board of Education may interview candidates in public or executive session, but that we must vote to appoint the candidate to a vacancy in public session, and there will be no decisions made in executive session. In the event interviews are conducted in executive session, board members in the public session nomination and voting process shall express their opinion in support of their vote, so that the public can witness any deliberations, policy formulation, and the decision-making process of the board. So I would like that clear.
Well, unfortunately, the policy is dated, and there has been rulings that the board cannot interview in executive session any longer. That used to be the procedure. Now it must be held in public. So what I indicated is accurate, but we need to update our bylaw.
But didn't you indicate that we could deliberate in private?
We do. We're required to actually have the conversation and deliberation.
If we can get clarification, if we can get clarification on deliberating in executive session, we can have that answer by the next meeting.
No, no, I think.
Well, I think we need to let whatever candidates might be willing to apply know in advance whether or not they're going to be interviewed and discussed in public, because that might actually, you know, affect somebody's willingness to apply.
Yeah, and I think that with the different changes, I think it has to be an open session.
Well, that would be fine with me. I just want it clear to the public, and I'm not getting clarity.
No, not a problem.
So it does, it doesn't mirror our policy. You can deliberate in executive session as long as you come out in public session and reiterate your statements that you made in.
But our superintendent said it's been updated.
Yeah, let me make very clear what my understanding is, is that you interview in public, you deliberate in private. So there's been questions about that, and we'll get a legal opinion to make sure that my understanding is correct. We verify that. If it's incorrect, I'll correct the record.
But in terms.
And how are we letting the public know?
In terms of the posting?
In terms of applications and in terms of everything else.
We have a, we have a meeting next week. We can inform the public then.
Well, we have a.
We have a posting that'll be, that'll be published this weekend, actually. So it'll be going out. It just has the requirements, actually, and the timing of it. But in terms of the process, I think, I think what you're saying is very important, that, and I'll talk with Mr. Mahmood about this, about sending to all of the applicants, this is our procedure, this is our process, so that there's no surprises to anyone who wishes to apply.
Is there going to be an issue? Because the procedure that you technically should send them is wrong.
We're going to send them a letter indicating exactly what is correct.
Correct procedure.
Yeah.
Okay, but then do we have to do something to change our policy then for future?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And how long are we going to post this, and where are we posting it?
Posting it in all of the news outlets that we currently post our meetings, but we'll also, I believe we're going to put an advertisement in the ledger. I'm not sure.
I believe it's the Courier-News.
In the Courier, okay.
So we're going to put an ad in the Courier-News?
Yeah, that's what we did before also. So when Mrs. Bogachewski actually came in, she came in on an unfilled term through this process as well. So we're going to duplicate the process that we had.
Are we going to put it on the website?
We'll do it through all of our regular channels that we advertise for.
And what period would it be?
Well, usually it's a 10-day type of posting, and we'll see if we need to keep it out longer at this point. But we do need to get our applicants in front of the board by that July, is it 17th? The July 17th board meeting.
Well, I would seriously suggest, given the time of year this is, with people graduating tomorrow, and a lot of families taking a post-school year vacation, that we allow a little bit more time, because we're going into the 4th of July weekend, and people will not see the ad.
I agree. We'll probably cut it off the Thursday before that board meeting anyway. So if we get in some applicants during that period of time, we'll make sure that the board and the public has a much opportunity to review the widest breadth of candidates that are interested in running for the, or interested in being appointed to our board.
Okay. Disappointed that we have updated.
So, okay, any further discussion on 11.1 to 11.3? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I think we're up now to old business, old business from the public. Please come up and do the usual routine.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. Just two items related to old business and the action agenda that were discussed. One is, I would be remiss in my position if I did not express to the One is, I would be remiss in my position if I did not express to the board the concern that they generate every single time they choose to rehash an item that has already been discussed in this book. And every single time that is done, that undermines the trust that is required to facilitate this district appropriately, and for our members to have faith in the decisions that are made here. So.
Can you be more specific?
The calendar.
And what, what aspect of the calendar?
Because, as you know, if you review from earlier in the year, the minutes, the reason that there needed to be an addendum was in relation to the conversation that just took place.
You mean, when you, when you and Ms. Durwood told us that 8.2.1 referred only to nurses? We'd be willing to stipulate that nurses don't come in on August?
If you choose to go back and forth like that, Mr. President, certainly that is your decision. The fact of the matter is, is that the minutes will reflect what that discussion was and what the intent of that language was, and why it was appropriately restored to what it was supposed to be. Whether or not you choose to lend credence to what I'm telling you.
Well, it was restored back to exactly what you said, restored with previous contract, but you, as part of that restoration, you made it clear that that clause that we restored referred only to nurses.
No, what you made clear is that you felt that that allowed you to do other things. Now, if you choose to speak over me and ignore the fact that I'm bringing to you legitimate concerns of the people that you serve as staff members, that's certainly your choice, and I'm glad that that is on public record.
That, that, that I serve the staff members?
Your position exists to facilitate.
Okay. Anything else?
Sure. The other question that I have is that, Dr. Schiff, you mentioned that you were going to remediate the water over the summer. You did not mention whether or not it would be restored to working order, because one of the things to remediate is to turn it off and close that one. The concerns that Ms. Salinger raised were whether or not there would be potable water available, specifically the one bubbler that doesn't function appropriately, and whether or not the students would have access to faucets in their classroom to wash their hands.
Yeah, it, it was the, the interest of the board to fix anything that, that had elevated levels of water, including providing filters if that was necessary, or actually changing out the fixture and the pipe as well. So that there wasn't, although there was talk prior to that that was a possibility, after we saw and had conversation about it, it's the, it's our intent to fix everything that needs to be, that needs to be fixed. So when, when Amy was up before and talking about some of the limitations of, of kids being able to wash their hands, for, for an example, or get water from, from a water fountain when there's just few, or you have many kids that are, that are eating, we're concerned about that, too. So that's what the plan is. We hope to get the final remediation plan from, from PARS, which is our environmental consultant, in mid-July, with the idea that we finish the work prior to the beginning of the school year.
And has the district been able to provide bottled water in the meantime for those students, as was discussed in the meeting that we attended at Sunnymeat?
We, we did. The, the first time that, that it was identified as having, having elevated lead levels, all of those rooms were given a case of water for that period of time. But we weren't going on alternate source water. There was, there was enough, at least in the short term, that a child could walk across the hallway to go to the bathroom, to wash hands, or to go to an adjacent classroom in order to get, get a drink of water. However, we thought it was convenient, it was the first time that, that we've had these issues, that we wanted to provide a case of water for, for that particular room. But it's, you know, that was a short-term type of thing. The long-term fix is fixing those fixtures or providing filters as necessary.
Which I appreciate, but as it stands, that room is not remediated yet, and you said you supplied one case of water for those students?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That room is not remediated yet, correct?
All of them will be remediated throughout the entire district.
But for this one specifically, the ones that we were discussing at Sunnymeat, there was a case brought over, but that room is still not remediated?
Well, none of the rooms have been remediated. That, that continued to test high. That work is going to be completed in the summer.
But there's been no subsequent cases of water brought over following the first one?
No, no, there was one case per room when we initially, when we initially found the elevated levels.
And given the hot weather that we've experienced lately, is the board planning on bringing any over, even if it is just for tomorrow?
For tomorrow, no.
Would they be willing to accept one from the association?
We would accept it from, from, you know, from anyone, you know, in order to do it, but my, we've asked parents if they were interested in bringing in water. There, there are places for children to get water if they're thirsty in, in the, in the, in the building. The only facility that's on alternate source water is Wood Fern at this point.
Sure.
And that's because it's the only school that's, that has well water. So they're on alternate source, but there were enough potable water areas throughout all of the other buildings that we were not going to go on alternate source for any extended period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public?
Hi, Amy Salinger again, Treasurer of the Hillsborough Education Association, T. Chair at Otten. I just wanted to just quickly thank Dr. Schiff for making the call with the hot weather that we recently had. I appreciate, and I know my staff, all the staff members, students, and even parents appreciated that call. I'm glad to see all the discussion this year over doing something about the climate in all of our buildings. Obviously, Otten means the most to me, because this is where I come every day, but it was nice to see us moving forward in that and thinking about the big picture in those things. I hope we continue to do that. You know, my understanding is we're working on getting air in more of the buildings, and I hope we continue to do that and do that in the right way, so that it's sustainable. And then I also wanted to comment on Mrs. Haas, what you were saying about appointing a new board member. I was at the meeting when Mrs. Bogushevsky was appointed. I do remember it all being in public, so I do hope, I was actually trying to find it just now for the specific date, but I couldn't, but I do hope, you know, we do follow whatever the policy is, but I would agree with Mrs. Haas that the open forum was the best way to make sure that everything was out in the open. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other old business from the?
Yeah, clarification, while we did have discussion in public, we also did meet in executive session, because I remember we interviewed a number of candidates as well. And then, since that time, that was when Barbara Sargent resigned, since that time is when they had the rulings with regard to open, what constitutes an open public meeting, and, and so, again, we'll get that clarified for next week's meeting, so that the public can be properly notified.
Anyone else?
One question, is 60 days from today, since his, the resignation is effective today, so it's 60 days from today?
I think it's 60 days. It's from today, from the.
Date of resignation?
Yeah, it's today.
In terms of when somebody has to be?
When the executive county soup would impose, well, they could impose, if, right,